Good evening, everyone. This is a joint meeting of the Transportation and Public Safety Subcommittee and Public Safety Subcommittee to discuss motions that were referred to. Why don't we just read a couple of notes? We've been waiting for Councils Maris and Constance Conway. Hi, Maran. I see that you're on. We have someone that is interested. Deb Ford-Gioch from the Dakota District Council. She'd like to join the meeting. Preferably video, but if not audio, how can she make that happen? Somebody from MIS on yet? Is somebody from MIS on? I see MIS is logged on.
Hi, Counselor. I just talked to Maran. He's looking into it right now.
Okay, yeah, there's somebody, apparently, folks are allowed to join by Zoom for Planning Board and zoning board, and Ms. Ford-Gioch would like to join, but she's been removed from the party.
Yeah, we were kind of limited at the Zoom because of the fear of getting hacked, but MIS is working on it right now, especially.
Okay, well, why don't we proceed? Mr. Clark, we have two members. I know Constance Conway and Constance Maris are on the transportation. But it's 6:05. Perhaps they can join us a little bit later, but we do have the Chair of the Public Safety Subcommittee, Counsel Chow, Counsel Rourke, and Counsel Drinkwater.
I think jointly we have a quorum, so.
Right, right, right. So why don't we proceed?
All right, from the Chairman Elliott.
Here.
Counsel Conway, Counsel Maris, Counsel Chow.
Here.
Counsel Rourke.
Here.
Counsel Drinkwater.
Here.
For press.
So why don't we get right into it? I don't anticipate this being a long meeting. There was one item that came up, a noise complaint relative to a manufacturing plant in Potuckyville. I thought I'd put it on, considering the original motion that was sent was relative to noise disturbances in the neighborhood, in particular from vehicles that create excessive noise, either through, you know, the automobile itself or using plane in the car. So with that, I know we've talked about this, you know, in the past, but considering more folks are now working at home and home more frequently, I did get a few emails and communications from residents asking, you know, what can we do about this? And I don't know the answer to that, but why don't I go to, you know, to Mr. Slagel or, excuse me, to you, Madam Manager, for any update? I know this is a police issue, so that's why we have public safety, but it seems like, you know, this excessive noise is more bothersome in all of our neighborhoods. So if we can start with that motion, then I'll go right to Chairman Chow and the Public Safety Subcommittee to take over the meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I know there was an issue regarding a commercial business and noise with deliveries. I'm not sure if that... I know Mr. Slagel has been looking into that. And so we can address that if that's okay with you, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, I think that makes sense, Madam Manager. Let's dispose of that because I see the Chief is journalist. I appreciate that Chief and the transportation engineers and our Mr. Slagel. So I appreciate that, but if there's no objection, this came from a complaint from many folks over in the Potuckyville area regarding the filling of various liquid gas tanks over the manufacturing site on Potucky Boulevard. So if, Mr. Slagel, could you give us any update of, you know, how we can... They're being filled at all hours of the morning, and it's extraordinarily noisy when these, you know, trucks are coming with this various liquid gases filling up at the plant.
Thank you, Counselor. I'll throw you to the rest of the Subcommittee. This is an issue that has been raised a few times by neighbors in the Potuckyville neighborhood regarding the filling of liquid nitrogen tanks at 1001 Potucky Boulevard. There have been a few separate complaints. The main complaints that we dealt with in the past were about the hours of the day that this filling was taking place. So about three years ago, we... The city had a meeting with folks from Farley White, who is the property owner and the landlord, from the two companies that operate... Two of the companies that operate in the building that use the liquid nitrogen, which... And with the nitrogen supplier back in 2017. And came to an agreement regarding the times of day during which these nitrogen deliveries would be made, specifically between the hours of 7:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m., which is typically in the city when you're allowed to do things like construction, when you're allowed to operate business function. Unfortunately, it hasn't been smooth sailing since then. We have had some sporadic complaints about untimely deliveries, and we have been forced to reach out to the Liquid Nitrogen Company to, first gently and then more fortunately, remind them of the hours which they agreed to do their deliveries. In this effort, we have been supported by Farley White. They've provided us with assistance to document the hours, the actual times that the truck were being delivered, and so they've been a good partner with the city in this. The reality is that those deliveries happened, and we had to speak to the Liquid Nitrogen Company about it. More recently, we've had complaints just about the general noise, even when the deliveries are happening during the times when... During that, the times during the day, during the business day. And that's... I do know that originally, again, back in 2017, when we spoke to the neighbors who were reaching out to the city, and Mr. and Mrs. Snyder, who owned the property that is the closest residential property to the... When they reached out to us and we let them know about the time agreement, they were satisfied with that and just wanted to make sure that we held the businesses to that time scale. More recently, I think that they're more concerned about the noise, and I would hazard a guess that's probably because, as Counsel Elliott mentioned, they are at home now as opposed to being at work when these deliveries. So this week, we reached out to Farley White to attempt to reengage with the parties to maybe come with, to do an evaluation of what kind of solutions we can come up with to try to make this issue not the burden that it is right now. So I spoke today directly to John Power, who's in charge of Farley White, about the two of us meeting on site during a delivery to try to do an evaluation of the noise and what would be an effective plan to try and mitigate the issues that it's creating with the neighborhood.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Slagel. We have registered speakers, so, Mr. Clark, could we go to Ms. Ford-Gioch first?
Yes, I would like to speak, but I believe the neighbor, Rich Snyder, he had requested to speak, perhaps he'd like to speak first.
Sure. Mr. Snyder, are you on the line?
He's not on yet. We have Elizabeth... Erin Querly's on. Mr. Snyder's not on.
Okay, can Erin speak, and then I'll speak?
Sure. Ms. Querly, would you like to proceed?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay. So I'm located at 76 Fowler Road, which is abutting the tanks behind the building. So I can just kind of give you a little bit of an observation of what's happening. I don't know exactly the history. I have been in this home for 13 years, so I think that was after the tanks were installed, so I wasn't part of the abutter questioning, but I can just tell you like a little more about what's happening.
Yes, please do.
Okay, so the one issue that I heard you speak of is the deliveries. So the deliveries are extremely loud, and I've heard that in the past they've given us a delivery time schedule, which I guess is helpful. It's been happening on weekends, and I believe it is within the business hours that, you know, you had mentioned earlier. It's happened like the past two Sundays around like 3 o'clock in the afternoon. So I don't know if weekends were supposed to be part of the plan, but the second issue that's happening is these tanks have a pressure release feature that it must be like whenever it needs to release pressure, and that can be in the middle of the night, that can be at any time, which I understand that's how the tanks work because you can't predict when they're going to need to release pressure. I've emailed the company because I've looked into it, and I understand that there is like a whisper valve you can attach, so there's some kind of a feature that you can get to mute the sound. So that would be something that I would be looking for because that is happening outside of the agreed-upon hours.
That makes sense. That makes a lot of sense. Mr. Slagel, can we work with the company to ensure, A, that they are... I'm sorry, Ms. Ford-Gioch, did you want to chime in and you all set?
Yeah, actually, what I'd like to do is, because with this issue, it's actually like a bigger picture. So this is the result of it being a burden for a while now. In fact, I believe the city has been trying to help out. I think it's John Murphy. For two years, has made yeoman's effort to try to work it out directly from the city to the company with no success at all. So we're at a point where there has to be some action items. When this meeting is over, is there going to be a meeting with a date and a time that the city is going to be meeting with the company so that we can get a report of what's happening and what are the action steps? Because from what I'm also hearing is when the original license that is required for them to operate, the neighbors kind of feel hoodwinked because they never were told that there was going to be a noise involved. So now, being good neighbors, you know, encouraging, you know, commercial business in the area, and now as homeowners and residents in a residential area, they're not having quality of life. So it kind of... I'm not sure what the license said or what it allows them to do. Hello?
Eric?
Yes.
Sorry about that.
So the question is next step. We've got a couple of other items.
Sure.
What are the next action steps? Because I concur, it's been going on for quite some time. You mentioned earlier that, you know, you've tried to be nice, and two years is an awful long time, and I think it's unfair to the neighbors there. Proceed in the same fashion. It has to stop and stop immediately.
Sure. So I think the first thing we need to do is, as I mentioned, have a meeting with Farley White and sit down and do an evaluation of the actual noise that's happening. It sounds like there are two sources of the issue. The one, which is if it's happening during normal business hours, the deliveries, and that's kind of what the parties were aware of. The release valve in the tank, I can certainly... We'll also meet with Farley White on that, and then we will sit down, because they are a long time, as the councilors know, longtime business partner with the city. They have a very good relationship with the city. Certainly trust that they want to do what's best for the city and for the residents. And so I definitely think we need to meet with them separately and then meet with the businesses, once the city and the landlord assess the problem and come up with some actual solutions that may work.
Good. I mean, I think that the problem's been assessed. I think if you want to sit down, can you report back to us in a week's time that you met with Farley White or Mr. Powers, you met with the owners, and that, you know, the issue is going to go away? I personally would like to see this sooner rather than later, given the history and given the fact that the city has been pretty understanding and quite frankly lenient. So we still have one more speaker on. Mr. Snyder, would you like to say a few words?
Yes. Hi, this is Richard, and Denise is here also. You know, I have a prepared thing, if you want me to read that quickly. Okay, so, you know, thanks for, you know, the opportunity to speak to you. And initially, a letter was sent to the abutters years ago by the city when these tanks were about to be installed. We both know about, you know, liquid oxygen and liquid nitrogen tanks. They're pretty innocuous in and of themselves, but we had never been around one of these tanks when they were filled. It's a whole different story when they're filled. We didn't have any idea of the noise level involved. You know, just imagine a truck parked in your backyard with the driver laying on the horn for 30 to 60 minutes while he revs the engine to a high level to pump the liquid. This is an honest and accurate description of the noise generated each time these tanks are filled, which is multiple times a week, and the deliveries, you know, as I said, are frequent. Some of the deliveries were made early in the morning hours and would wake us from sleep, but that seems to have been pretty much resolved with speaking between the facility and the city. You know, this problem goes back years, and we're really looking forward to a solution. One of the solutions that was brought forth was the installation of a sound barrier or wall. And in our opinion, you know, it would be like yelling in the Grand Canyon. It's going to bounce off the wall, bounce off a three- or four-story-high cement wall that is the building, and just bounce right back in the neighborhood. That's not workable at all. It's an idea, but one that I'm most sure that it will not work. Our affected neighbors have signed a petition regarding this offensive noise problem, and one of the neighbors that was mentioned said that the noise was indeed offensive to her, but she thought that nothing could be done about it, and I hope very much that she's wrong. On Monday, July 6th, a delivery was made, as my family was enjoying time on our screen porch where I am right now. We spent a lot of time out here in the back of the house in the summer, and it faces the plant where the tanks are located. There was a delivery that occurred at that time, and the delivery was so intensely loud that we could not even converse between ourselves or hear the television on the screen porch. We were driven into the house to escape the ungodly noise. This truck sounded like it didn't even have a muffler on the engine, which is unusual. Usually, you know, the truck engine in and of itself is loud, but this particular delivery drove me over the edge, and that's why I'm speaking to you today, I think. So, you know, just try to imagine a monster truck rallying in your backyard. This is not an exaggeration, and it prompted a call by me to the police, as well as Mr. Murky, who's in charge of noise pollution, or not in charge, but he works under the direction of others, but he came out and was investigated at Forest for the city. You know, I'm sure you're well aware, there are noise level laws in this city, and these are being violated left and right by these terrible, terrible, loud fillings of the tank. You know, if this was happening in any of your council's backyard, something would be done immediately.
Well, Mr. Snyder, that's exactly why, as soon as I get the email from Deb Ford-Gioch and yourself and others, we immediately put this on the Subcommittee agenda, knowing that it's been going on too long. I certainly wouldn't like it in my backyard, nor would anybody else. They're not abiding by the terms of the agreement, and we're going to take some action, we're going to take some swift action to address it. So I appreciate you calling in and giving us your thought. Please know that we are going to move on this. I think I could entertain a motion from any... I'm not sure if anyone else from the subcommittees, post-subcommittees would like to speak, but this clearly is an issue. We have a noise ordinance. This violates that noise ordinance in the city, and I would like to make a motion that the Inspection Service Department enforce the terms of that ordinance. So this will stop, you know, this will stop immediately to, you know, because it's just, it's really not acceptable. So I'd like to make that motion that we, you know, that the Inspection Services report back in a week and, you know, to give us an update on meetings that have taken place and what, you know, what measures have been taken to stop this excessive noise in this neighborhood.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your time and your attention.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So a motion was made, seconded by Counsel Conway. Any further discussion on this motion?
I just had a question. Will it be continued to the next meeting for transportation?
I think that makes some sense. We'll get a report in a week, and then we'll schedule another meeting to provide an update. We meet every two weeks. It doesn't mean that we have to wait for two weeks to take place, so I'll get a report from the City Manager and Inspection Services, and then I assure you we'll schedule another meeting, just transportation meeting, very soon.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome. We will be back in touch.
Thank you.
Why don't we turn this over? The next item is, you know, Chief, I don't know if you can chime in. I know there was a motion that I made that was sent relative to the excessive noise from vehicles, you know, vehicles in the neighborhood, whether it's in large part just the loud music that's being played. I know it's not an easy issue. How do you catch them? How do you enforce the issue? Is there something from a citizen perspective that we can weigh in? Because we all, you know, the police cannot be everywhere. Is there something we can do, either capturing video, a license plate, or something? Because I know they... I know we had the discussion many times. You know, the perpetrators have to be kind of caught in the act, and I know that's virtually impossible for the police to do on a regular basis. So I just throw that out there, Chief. I don't suspect there's an easy answer, but I have to say a fair amount of folks have contacted me, knowing that they work at home now, and this has become more prevalent to them now that they're home during the day.
Yeah, thank you, Counsel. Yeah, it is a challenge, like anything else we do in the city. All these young kids like having these vehicles who, you know, be hurt, and they're hurt all right. We try to concentrate on places that we know that they congregate at, which would be where the car washed out on Perry Street. A lot of them, they tend to gravitate towards that area, and they'll hang out and check out each other's cars. I know I've received complaints from people up in Potuckyville. You can hear them up there racing late at night from their homes. So we try to concentrate in those areas. I know we've written probably 15 tickets, according to the report coming by the Traffic Bureau today so far. Just on this, we've actually asked that the step detail, which is the traffic that we talk about all the time, that if they do catch someone with an infraction, a separate infraction would be if the car was loud. And again, you know, I understand the neighbor's concern. And again, um you know, I understand the uh neighbor's concern, just like the fireworks, um it just gets out of hand sometimes, but uh we also try to balance it, because they are mostly kids that are driving these cars and uh don't have a lot of money, but uh we should, you know, either give them the ticket, or we ask them to go back to the shop that they got it from, and uh try to get some kind of a modification done, whether tone it down a little bit. We have the same issue with the motorcycles, uh they just like them to be loud, and I know the what the advantage of loud motorcycles are, that people will hear them come before they see them, and there's less chance of accidents, that's kind of what the mindset with that is, believe it or not, but it is true. Uh but yeah, we're working at it, and I understand, you know, that the neighbors have a right to be able to, like Mr. Snyder just said, be able to sit on their back porch, whether it's a loud exhaust or a uh a tank uh letting off steam, or a car, um you know, we need to try to do our best to uh find that balance and educate the public.
All right, I I do think that is positive news, that some ticket hour being written, and um can residents, if they do, you know, if it's kind of a repeated um habit in certain neighbor neighborhoods, certain vehicles, can they can they take the vehicle and send it in, and I mean, is that something that could be effective to sort of be the eyes and ears of the police sometimes?
I mean, especially if they could get the plate, you know, if they get a picture of the plate or whatever, I mean, they don't wanna get into a confrontation with these times.
Right.
Um but there's nothing illegal with them doing that, and obviously, you know, if they get those pictures, and it's a constant problem. And um you know, if we have the plate, we can actually go uh stop by and see the uh young man
Okay.
or maybe, and just so you know what, this is, it's either gonna be, either try to go back to where you got it from and have to address it a little bit here, or we're just gonna have to keep giving you tickets until you can't afford to drive your car. I mean, it's just it, your insurance goes up to the point where you can't insure your car anymore. We don't wanna do that, but yeah, living in the city, you gotta find that balance. We talk about it all the time.
Okay, good, that that's good. I don't have any other questions. Um Counsel Chow, you are the peer of public safety, so I I think that's good news, and Counsel Chow, turn it over.
Uh thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh for calling this meeting, and um I still may comment and the chief touch uh some aspect of already. What makes these cars loud is that they make the adjustment to the mufflers or to some other part of the vehicles, which make it loud.
Mm-huh.
Is that legal, or are the shops that are doing this work, do they know the the specifications, that at what sun level or measurement of of exhaust pipe or so far is legal? And if it's not legal, um you know, under the routine of the police officers um driving around during the day, if there's a spec of vehicle that has some alterations in the vehicle, can they stop them, give them a warning, just try to be ahead, try before, you know, because I see that a lot of alterations to these vehicles, and I'm not quite sure, you know, what what legal aspect?
Well, again, I probably need a lesson in this, because it's been a long time for me, but that's why we have the Traffic Bureau. But I, the first thing that would pop up to me is just not only the loud exhaust, but the height of the vehicle. So I don't know whether they're um, you know, how they get an inspection sticker, I don't know, I don't know if they wouldn't have their car inspected and then do the modifications afterwards. I mean, that's obviously something that um we can go back and look at the fifteen tickets that we wrote and um to see uh to track their inspection records, to see if we can find out when they're inspected, and if there's a certain um garage out there that's kind of, you know, putting these, I mean, they're doing it legally, I guess, they put a sticker on a car, and then they turn around and the kid makes the modification, then you really can't hold the garage car. So then you try to track down the people that actually did the install, whether it's from a place on Middlesex Street, and uh remind them that they're um basically, you know, breaking the law here. But legally, what can we do to them, you know, driving the car? So it's it's something I I will look into, to see if there's um, you know, I'll get people that know about the inspection system, obviously, I mean, it's computerized now, so they can tell everything about a car, not just by a push of a button, when it was inspected, you know, um with with there's any um problems with it. That's like a a statewide database, a lot easier to track. I can definitely look at that, have some look at it, and uh see if we can find some kind of a pattern, the garages it's offending, or there's a shop that's making the modification when they shouldn't.
Thank you. No further comment.
Thank you. Any other members of the Public Safety Committee have thoughts, concerns about this motion? No? Counselor Rourke, I'll set. Conway? Okay, um thank you. Um there was just one other item, fireworks. Um Chief, you sort of alluded to it, it's along the same lines of, you know, excessive noise, there are lots of fireworks. Any idea how many complaints um generally, maybe I don't expect you to have that on your fingertips, but um has it, you know, certainly over the Fourth of July and and even before that, it was um really very prevalent, a lot of fireworks in the city. Does it continue, and how many complaints have?
Well, I could tell you, um this is a a problem of all the state, and uh everybody in the in the states, and I know you, even the uh manager and I had talked the other day about, you know, where these fireworks are coming from, and obviously across the border. I know the uh Attorney General's obviously mailed out uh mailings to uh warnings, basically, to those companies, companies in New Hampshire, warning about shipping fireworks into the Massachusetts. And uh the manager had asked me to reach out to the state police, and as I did, I guess the governor had already mentioned that uh he was getting a lot of complaints, that the uh Officer Public Safety up there at the State House. So um they are are doing investigations that I really can't talk about, um I was kind of very glad to hear about. But just here in Lowell, just on the um the the night of the Fourth, I was actually driving back from uh the Lower Riviera, and uh there was two hundred and fifty-eight calls on that Fourth of July night uh in the city. Now, there were um, and I had the radio with me, so I listened to them. Um they were just back to back to back, to the point where dispatch would just give out the address, thirty-one Metacross Street, whatever, and wouldn't even have to tell you also what the call was. Uh so it was a very busy night. Uh luckily for us, it was a quiet weekend as far as uh serious crime, so it didn't draw us away from um anything uh major, it was a, like what is a quiet uh weekend, as far as that goes. But um there were fireworks confiscated, uh a couple of scenes where uh the officers went there for the second time after there were one the first time, which doesn't work a lot. And uh kids took off on foot, so there was uh three or four incidents where that happened, the fireworks were confiscated, so it kind of quieted down in that part of the city, but it was all over the city, I mean, the Highlands, Union, Lower Belvedere, I think the only place that had fireworks is downtown, um but I could be wrong, but I didn't I didn't hear any calls there. So it's an ongoing problem, but uh the state police are looking at this, um it it is a bigger picture. Obviously, you've probably heard from Boston, um that they're actually buying fireworks uh in New Hampshire and then going into the neighborhoods in Boston uh and selling it. We've been watching for that here in Lowell, we've not seen anything like that yet, but I'll just leave it that the state police definitely are looking at uh any kind of activity like that.
Okay, great, thank you, Chief. Counselor Rourke?
Uh thank you, uh Mr. Chairman. Here's a quick question for uh Superintendent. Um every call that comes in for fireworks, the police department does check that out, correct? Does it make a difference, does it make a difference between gunshots and fireworks? So every call that does come in, the police department does check out, no matter how many addresses or calls in a particular shift, correct?
Absolutely, because our biggest fear is that it's it's a shot fire call, you know, so they're 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 marching orders, I gotta go there and verify that it is fireworks. If there's paper in the street, or you have a witness that, you know, now this kid just out here in the street, uh or, you know, take it to the next level, if you don't find the um, you know, leftover fireworks or whatever, street paper usually goes, uh shell casings, you look for damage to property, damage to vehicles, um but we didn't have any of those over that, it was all fine.
Good, I just wanted, you know, the public to know that every call is answered uh for safety reasons, um whether it be for fireworks or, you know, the worst case scenario. Uh and I think it's important that uh people do understand that, so thank you, Chief.
Yeah, we don't take fireworks calls at face value, not not these days.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Um Chairman Chow? I think those are the three items on the agenda, uh Mr. Clark, um anything else?
That's it.
Okay, um well, uh thank you, everybody. I know it was a quick meeting, um but we know these are difficult uh issues to address, and I know the chief uh has been doing his best, and um we'll we'll bring this forward as a report of progress, um unless uh any members of the City Council have any thoughts or comments that have joined the subcommittee meeting? Nope, if not, I'll entertain a motion uh to adjourn by Counsel Chow, so I'm gonna wait. Counselor Rourke, all those are designated by CNI and the party. Uh motion carries, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, Chiefs, thank you, Madam Manager, Mr. Baldwin, Sasha, the clerk, well, thank you for joining us, and I will bring this forward.
Good, gonna take us a little time to set up for the next one, so.
Okay, will do. Thank you.